Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? All right, so I am going to, this is to remind everybody that this is a continuation of a public hearing relative to an application submitted by Copart of Connecticut Incorporated doing business for a Class II motor vehicle dealer's license for a business to be located at 170 South Main Street in the Sonnet. At the last meeting, we allowed for questions from the public and after a presentation from the applicant Copart, their lawyer, attorney Thomas Klarin, and their engineers, we allowed some back and forth and then without objection from the board, I think we should continue for a brief time to allow for additional questions and our very brief statements from the public, then follow up from the board, close the public hearing, and determine and discuss if we're ready to make a determination on the license. Is the board okay with that? Good, thank you. So I'm gonna just open it up to the public for a very brief time and just please keep your comments short and brief and to the point. And any questions, I'd be happy to hear from the applicant and or their lawyer.
Hi, for the record, Marcus Baptiste, Pre Chester Avenue in Berkeley. I spoke last time about the berm and I would like to speak to it in relation specifically to our bylaw. The picture on the left is the current view from Chester Avenue and the Asonet River. These brown areas right now, that's wide open, there's no trees there at all. These brown areas right now, it's fairly open. Here's a close-up view, so you have one, maybe two rows of trees and then it's, you know, the earth. When that's not brown anymore, when that's glass and chrome and shiny metal and the leaves are gone, you are gonna see right through that completely, like, there's nothing even there. Here's another shot there, that's probably 75 or 100 feet with no trees, zero. Your bylaw, Section 11.18, the zoning districts, Section B, says "All new construction shall conform to the provisions of this bylaw." Then Section 11.18E1, "All operations," and this is industrial districts, that's the heading of this section, "all operations are conducted and all materials used in such operations or held in storage are contained within enclosed buildings or enclosed by a solid wall, fence, or plantings of such nature and height," that's a very important word, "and height as to conceal such operation or materials from the view from any public way or area." This river is a public area, used by the public all day, every day. So "such nature and height as to conceal such operational materials from view from any public way or area or neighboring premises." The plan as designed does not do that, does not conform to the bylaw and should not be issued. A berm would solve that problem, the berm with the fence on top of it. This picture here is further down the river, I'm sorry, is further down the river. This is a natural ridge that remained. The parking lot's gonna be on the other side of that, a little bit lower, so you're not gonna see the parking lot. They don't have to build, I don't know what it is, a couple thousand feet of berm, they just need to build a berm and do fencing or plantings to fill in the gaps where there is not a current ridge or whether or not, some areas have much deeper sections of trees, but a lot of it doesn't. They need to fill that in to comply with the bylaw to conceal such operations or materials from view. Currently, it does not, it does not conform with the bylaw, it should not be issued as designed. Thank you.
Thank you. Does Copart or their Androida entry as one of the son?
Respectfully, we disagree with this gentleman's point. As this board knows and it's part of our submission, it's part of our Class II application, but also the site plan review application, we're required to secure a zoning opinion letter from the zoning enforcement officer, which we did. And again, it was submitted to this board as well as the site plan. We went through a detailed site plan review process that was reviewed not only from our, an engineering standpoint, but the town's consulting engineer also does a thorough review of the town's bylaw to make sure that we complied with it. And the plans as submitted were found to comply with the town's bylaw. So we don't agree. There is going to be a fence around the property and again, I think it complies with the very, very provision that this gentleman just read from.
Hold on, everybody, please, hold on, hold on. Can you just explain what kind of fence? Is it a natural fence? Is it a chain link fence? Is it a fence with barbed wire on the top? What kind of fence?
Randy, can you explain the details on the fence, please?
Thank you.
Randy Carr with the pre-engineering. It's an eight-foot solid steel chain fence.
According to the plans I've looked at, that fence is gonna be placed at approximately elevation 28. An eight-foot fence will be 36, the top of the fence. Huge portions of the parking lot are at elevation 42 and then the cars are four or five feet above that, so 46, 47, 48. And the fence, the top of the fence is 36. You are gonna look right over the fence. The fence does not conceal this project from the view of a public area or the neighboring properties. It just doesn't, it's a fact. If it didn't get picked up in the public hearing process, it was missed. This is still a public hearing for a permit to operate this business. It does not comply.
I'm just gonna correct you a little bit. This is a public hearing for a Class II dealer's permit, not-
To operate an industrial business.
For, to hold those cars there, correct.
According to our bylaw.
I'm just gonna warn you that our scope is limited. We do, we do have some leeway, but I just wanna warn you that some of that, of what you're saying possibly could be out of our scope, but not entirely. I'll give you that.
Okay, I, just quickly, and then I'm, then I'm done. This does not give you leeway. It says "it shall conform to the provisions of the bylaw." It doesn't say it can, or it might, or maybe will, "shall conform," it does not conform. I'm gonna look right over it. People kayaking down the river are gonna look right over it. It is not shielded from the view, it does not conform.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Tripp, where I was in, uh, my question is, what's Plan B when all these cars can't get by down there? Are we gonna widen the road and take people's front lawn again like they did with the two houses down there for Stock and Shop and stuff? I mean, where do the residents end up with anything out of this whole thing? This thing is just, the whole town is just being sold out for these businesses and we're not getting anything apart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, when you want me to respond to this.
Right after it's done, okay.
That's fine, right now. Go ahead, while it's fresh, go ahead.
That's all right.
All right.
I'll do first, yeah.
Gary Mendy's, he's free time. Mr. Carr is right, and this is a mandated license that the board has to give. I don't think the board is mandated at all to give him a license for 15,000 cars. I think the board should give him a license for 1,000 cars. Make sure they're a good neighbor and let them come back to the board and bargain with the town a little bit better than what they're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
I know this was mentioned last time when we were here, but to Mr. Tripp's point regarding traffic, there was a prior use that was proposed for this site, there was a thorough MEPA evaluation done and a MEPA certificate ultimately was received. As part of that process, the first phase of that proposed project would have generated 9,000 traffic trips before any off-site improvements would be needed. The proposed use here, we're talking about, is roughly 300 to 350 trips per day, which is about three or three and a half percent of what was approved under that prior project. So respectfully, I don't think, and I think that the studies have brought this out, that this is gonna create a traffic problem. And our traffic report was also reviewed by the town's peer review engineer as well.
Thank you. Again, I'm gonna somewhat disagree with you. I did read that in the report, but I also think that there's a big difference between industrial-sized truck traffic and car traffic. So I think that there is, there is a difference. That's my personal belief and I'm not speaking on behalf of the board at this time.
Just to respond to that, Brandon Carr, interview the engineering again. The first phase of that larger project included warehouses, industrial uses, business, so it did contemplate a large amount, probably a larger percentage of truck traffic than Copart, definitely a larger volume of truck traffic.
But we could've went through site plan review and done the same thing to them as we're doing with you, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Presently, there's a, there's a, the Stock and Shop that is there that's buffered by the woods that are there now. And I live directly across from that and I hear the trucks backing up with their bells ringing. It's, it's right through the night and it's constant. Now, if this, if the woods are cleared, we're gonna hear that much louder, so the noise pollution will be increased. On top of the equipment they're gonna use to move cars around with the backup bells that ring and ding and, you know, and that, and I don't know if they, you know, what kinda hours of operation they have when they're there, but between all those different sounds that we're gonna be getting, definitely they should put a wall up with a, maybe a fence on top of it to help the noise, cut the noise back as well. So I'd be in favor of that.
Thank you. Sir, sir, what does your name to the record, please?
My name is Bill Adams.
Thank you.
Well, Smith, I'll send them page shorts. The question before this one called "traffic," and I hope that the board has thought about the train stations coming in, is traffic gonna be there, and plus the nice housing they're gonna put in there, there's gonna be traffic there, so. The traffic, right now, might be fine, but we have to think about in the future a little bit, there's gonna be a lot of traffic. If you said "past" traffic, plus all these, these traffic, plus, plus the stop and shop traffic. Traffic could be a real problem, especially if we gotta narrow the road, is it gonna work, what we have to do? Thank you.
Thank you.
I, we don't, we can't necessarily predict what's gonna be coming down the road for future developments, but as more development is done, if more development is done and more traffic is increased or traffic's increased, then those potential developers may have to make some off-site improvements. I mean, Copart can't be responsible for what may come, whether it's five years, 10 years, 50 years down the road, just like Stock and Shop wasn't or somebody else.
All right, anybody else? Last call? Okay, go ahead.
This is my hearing on Copart, right?
Yes, yeah. And please just state your name to the record.
My name is Priscilla Chapman and I'm here representing the Taunton River Watershed Alliance.
Thank you.
And the comments are mainly, we would like to urge Copart to keep development at least 200 feet from the edge of the Taunton River. I'm not sure if we've seen the latest plans, but we believe the Taunton River is, as you know, I think, our designated federal waterhead, we've seen it, so we would like, we would very much appreciate if Copart could leave the 200 feet between the water's edge and back undeveloped.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
And I'm not sure if you are the one that emailed the board or myself. Will this hurt us getting federal grants? Will, will Copart hurt the town from getting federal grants through the Taunton Watershed Alliance? Cause I know you just said they're federally, it's federally protected, so I'm just wondering, there was a lot of work done in that and this might not pertain to you and you might not be the person that sent me that email, but I'm just wondering.
I did not send, no.
Okay, thank you.
But obviously, I'd be wondering if-
If it's gonna hurt federal grants in the future, that's all. But you're not the one that sent me the email, so that's fine.
Right, obviously, the federal government did approve the waterhead designation and I'm sure they would like to see that.
Thank you.
Hi, Cora Purse from the Narragansett Indian Tribe's Historic Preservation Office. I did speak at the last hearing, but of course, you constantly think of things afterwards. And because they're doing, they're clear, they've cleared this area for 22,000 spaces, car park, you know, even though they're only gonna use maybe 12,000, I think that number needs to come down. As far as putting a berm in, you all of a sudden are gonna have retaining walls and that's just not a good thing on that land, it's very vulnerable. I did request copies of the proposed conservation restriction and I haven't received them this week, so I haven't had time to review them or see if they're, if that is still in play. But I really would like to see the land, the 84 acres or 111 acres preserved along the waterfront.
It's already planned, or continue? Do you have any response to that?
We can certainly point out on the plan where the conservation restriction land
So the conservation restriction is anything in green on that plant, 132?
132 acres, correct? Okay, thank you. On that plan, can you show, sorry, can you show me on that plan exactly where this gentleman wanted the berm? So it would be from the green jet out in front of that little corner? Along that area right there? Is there any vegetation there now?
So the green area is the area-
Reserved land, right.
That's outside of the limit of work, yeah, so that was not disturbed. So any existing vegetation that's in that area is still there.
So there is still vegetation in that area that hasn't been clear cut yet?
Nothing.
Just that small amount right there?
Yeah, there, it's definitely a clear area of that buffer, there's bigger trees in other areas of the buffer, but-
Can you leave that putter up?
These, these were taken to the-
Okay, can you just, is there any, no, can you just go back to the last one? Is there any more vegetation or trees coming down along that area?
No, all tree clearing on the entire site has been-
All right, what is, what is the distance in that area right there?
From the water's edge to the limit of work is, I would say, 100 feet, 120 feet and that, that closest point.
This, this area here, probably is the detention basin?
Yes.
Do you know the property, how far from the edge of this detention basin to pavement?
Probably another 80 to 100 feet. All pavement, all impervious surfaces, any pavement, any car storage areas are all located outside the 200 square area. So those are all at least 200 feet from the edge of the river.
Okay. And you're saying no other vegetation, trees or and or anything is gonna be taken down other than what you've already clear cut?
Correct, in that area. Everything is within the limit of work and we've certified and talked to the town about, you know, checking the limit of work, their engineers checked the limit of work, it's all within what was shown on the group plans.
Anybody else?
Good evening, Philip White, baby, happy birthday. Willing in the foreseeable future, the business just via the waterway that has not been proposed at this time is gonna further disrupt the Taunton River. Also, it may not be proud of Copart right now, but who's monitoring the site work construction with the amount of dust pollution and everything that's going on now when we get the days of heavy winds? I've seen clouds of dust coming out, over, all the way over to my property on the opposite side of the river.
In response to the, the first question, there's no intention on the part of Copart to utilize the waterway to conduct business whatsoever. In terms of the work and who's overseeing it, I know the pre-engineering is intimately involved, I believe they have somebody on site every day? Every day? And as I understand it, and correct me, Brandon, if I'm wrong, EPG is also not going on every day, but is doing periodic reviews on the site.
Just to follow up on that gentleman's question, do you have any onsite water and are you spraying for dust?
I'll let Brandon handle it.
Thank you.
So just first to expand on, Manafort Construction is the contractor they're doing, they require weekly inspections and daily observations. We're on site every day, the town's engineer has been out there, maybe every two, three, four weeks, he's kind of in and out of there. Conservation Commission, Conservation Agent's been out there, DEP and the town officials have been out there. There are two water trucks operating continuously all day, every day. Since the water line got hooked up about a month, month and a half ago, they've been running more frequently, cause previously they had to fill up slower means, so now they can actually connect into the town water supply. So they're running continuously, eight to nine hours a day.
So if the, if this license permit is granted tonight, I would hope that Copart would add an additional truck, water truck on site because it is a dry season, a very dry season and that, and you know, any bit of wind or dust can take, can absolutely take, you know, any of that far beyond, so I would hope that they do all they could to prevent that from happening.
Hi. My name is Rebecca Gannon and I live across the river, exactly across from where this is going in. I've been there for 35 years. It's been quiet. We now have noise 24 hours a day from Stock and Shop. We have noise from their company. Thanks for coming in and taking all that beautiful land. They came in bulldozers, took it down, literally, there were animals hunt, run in front of the bulldozers. It's a sin what has happened to this. That was a beautiful Indian sacred land. I read in their plans, they were gonna look for anything that would might be Indian pertaining and they would start. Well, hell, they cleared out the whole place in less than a week. So they did not check as they promised to do and they butchered that land. And it's a sin that the town is giving, doing this to such a wonderful piece of land. And yes, it does involve the river. Every day, it involves the river. And they have cleared land way less than 100 feet. Look at this picture. I can go over there in my kayak, get off, and there's the river, all right? And when it rains, we're gonna have all that water coming down, so this little fence isn't gonna help. And he's done so much damage, the town, Free Town should be ashamed. He's gonna let them in, okay?
Thank you. All right, last call and I'm gonna turn it over to the board. All right. I have a couple of questions. First, Attorney Klarin, I wanted to thank you very much for your very detailed response and letter to the board, I appreciate it very much. There's certainly areas that you and I agree on, but there are some that we absolutely differ on. You discussed in the early part of 2019 into the summer months, there were informal preliminary discussions and meetings regarding the project with various public officials. Can you tell me how many informal meetings there were?
So I, I think this project, there may have been some discussions before I became involved. I know there was a preliminary meeting with, I have to forgive me if I don't get all the names right, but I believe with, I believe the police chief was there, the fire chief, Mr. Damaris, I don't wanna say Mr. Demaris was there, or out, knowing specifically if he was or not, but he may not have been. But I would say there were maybe four or five different officials from the town. I know I attended at least one. I'm not sure, Kevin, if you attended any others beyond?
I think I got two at least.
Okay, so, two that Mr. Carr has attended, I know at least one that I attended.
Were there any members of the board of selectmen at any of those meetings in the capacity as of selectmen?
I don't believe so.
Thank you. All right, is Jeff not here, is he?
A building inspector, I believe, was there at the meeting.
No, no, is he here tonight?
Nope.
Nope, okay, thank you. I'll ask Copart then. Have you submitted any building plans? Specific building plans?
I, I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure if the building plans have been submitted yet. I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. As part of the site plan review, I know that you guys went over everything and all the butters were notified properly because we went over that the last time, correct?
Correct.
And are any of those butters here this evening? Okay. The planning board set conditions, have you met all of the conditions and were there any conditions that you did not want to meet by the planning board? And why or why not?
It's about 13 or so of them there.
Did you meet all?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
I don't recall there being any particular condition that we had any particular issue with. I know that we had discussions about the annual monitoring of the detention basins. We didn't think that that was needed, but we didn't strenuously object to doing it. So we didn't have an issue with the board imposing that, we didn't think it necessary, but we'll do it. I think one that may not be on there is we may not have the written agreement with the cemetery board in terms of access to the cemetery. Off the top of my head, that's the only one I can think of that maybe has not been complied with, other than if something needs to be done post-construction. I know the conservation restriction needs to be completed, we think we have that in final form, it just needs to get the signature, so that's something I can't say is 100% completed, but we believe the wording's been worked out.
Okay. And on the notice of intent with the conservation commission, it was from them that you placed the 132 restriction on the acres, correct?
That's correct.
And that was from our conservation commission?
That's from your conservation commission.
Yes, okay, thank you. Copart went through MEPA. There was a time that comments were asked for. Can you just let me know if there were any issues from any of these departments or commissions and boards that I'm gonna ask about that you did not comply with, save the bay?
I don't know if anybody complied with, but they submit-
So, I mean, they asked for certain things because it is their area, as much as it is the town's area, and you know, that's, that's something that they, you know, love and do every day. So I'm just wondering, there were certain things that they asked for or just wanted you to just take into consideration and maybe you could or couldn't for various reasons? Maybe, you know, it was, you know, in a conservation area that you couldn't comply with, or maybe it was, you know, the detention fund that you couldn't do. So I'm just wondering, did you listen to and respond to any of these, save the bay?
Uh, yes.
Natural heritage?
Yes.
Taunton River, Stewart Chip Castle?
Yes.
Okay. Wildland Seanet Taunton River?
Yes.
Okay, Green Futures?
Yes.
And Mass Division of Marine Fisheries?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think it's just, I don't know, just stay here, I have a feeling you might have the answers to this, you have questions.
No. You don't know where I'm going. I'm gonna flip the switch on you. All right. The plans in the overview of Copart was dated on, the ones that I got, 11/8/2019. Has anything changed since those plans on 11/8/2019, the parking area square footage?
No.
The building square footage?
No.
How can you say that when you, I just asked you if a building plan was submitted and you said that there wasn't one? So- So is that building plan definitely gonna be the size and scope of what the eleven eighth, twenty nineteen plans are?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ground material, you talked about grindings?
Uh, it's the, the surface material?
Yes.
It's called chip seal?
Yep.
So it's an aggregate sprayed with an asphalt?
But not, but not solid asphalt? Like a pavement?
It's, it's used for pavement.
It is used.
It's not roadways, it is, it's not the same exact pavement as our parking lots made out of.
Correct.
But it's a similar product that's impervious and applicable for this type of use, correct, yes.
Okay. In your packet that Co-Part submitted, and I'm talking to Co-Part now, you talked about job creation. Have any consideration to having Free Town applicants be hired prior to any other applicants?
That's, that's a common question that, that we get from any development in any town. And I think Co-Part will be committed to, you know, they gotta be careful because they can't violate any fair hiring practices. But you know, if they get an applicant from Free Town, will they make sure that that gets a thorough look? Yes, they will.
All right, thank you.
I just, just wanna give you an update on the building permit. It was, uh, it has been applied for. There should be issued a foundation permit soon there, the last pieces are working out the sprinkler plans. But I just texted a person at Co-Part, the application has been applied for.
Thank you so much for that, I appreciate it. So we talked about the last time tax and revenue generation. And right now you're assessed at a five point eight million assessed value of the, of the land area, which brings in about a hundred and twenty-two thousand in taxes. So you surmise that the increased value of this land would have to grow five times, up to thirty to forty million dollars to generate five hundred to seven thousand dollars per year in taxes. I asked for specific numbers and how you determine that and I didn't get that.
This was prepared, those numbers were given to me by Co-Part. It's basically in line with similar facilities and the property value they have. Also, they estimated with the construction cost with these, which is, you know, a cost that goes into improving the land. So they basically gave me numbers that are typical with similar scale developments that they have in the other states.
So my request for how these numbers were derived were never explicitly given to us?
I, I apologize if, if I think both I and Brandon misunderstood you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Carr was reading from this in back statement that they had prepared and, and you asked, could I see that? And we said that we would get that to you. I did send that to Mr. McIntosh last, last week.
I, I have that and that's where I got the thirty to forty million to five hundred. But that's just a statement, right? So we don't really know if we're really gonna get five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars per year in taxes.
That's.
We could get, we could get two hundred and fifty, correct? I mean, there's no guarantee that, that this is gonna be five times better than what it was before and be a thirty to forty million dollar piece of property, correct?
I certainly can't give you any guarantee. I mean, obviously it's gonna come down to the town's board of assessors in terms of how they assess the property. This is best based off of, as Brandon stated, Co-Part's estimates for similar facilities that they have in terms of how much it costs to improve the value of the properties at the conclusion. So that's where those estimates came from. But ultimately, I mean, I can give you any number, but it's gonna come down to your own board of assessors.
I think that's my point, thank you. I'll turn it over, George, do you have any questions? Okay, Trevor?
Nope.
So we're just gonna, we're not deliberating right now, we're just gonna ask them if they have any questions? And then we're gonna close the public hearing and then we're gonna deliberate.
Actually, I have a question. So if, say we did not grant this license, right, what would the next steps be after that that you would have to take?
Thanks for putting me on the hot seat, Mr. McIntosh.
Well, guys, one, I want.
It's, it's a, it is a fair question. Co-Part has already invested a substantial sum of money in the purchase of this property and has already invested a substantial sum of money in terms of their beginning development stages. They have identified this area as a critical region for their operations. If Co-Part does not get this license granted, although they haven't specifically said this to me, I would anticipate that they would appeal the board's decision.
Yep, thank you.
George, anything? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Do you have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Time to deliberate. I'm just gonna start with this. Personally, I feel that this is not what I anticipated for this area. I envision senior housing, office buildings, smaller businesses and industries. I never could imagine in my life that I'd be sitting here contemplating an auto auction house or salvage yard to be located near protected land, near waterfront. It is a sad use of a beautiful, potentially prosperous property. But everybody's, but everybody's vision is different. Co-Part is a business that like it or not, hate it or not, want it or not, that followed the proper channels. Went to the building inspector, went to the zoning enforcement officer and it was deemed appropriate. Went to the site through plan review through the planning board and followed all the recommendations. Went to the conservation land and protected one hundred and thirty-two acres of land. Asked for input from other boards, agencies and committees. Now everybody's here looking at this board to stop and not allow this business. But we really don't have that authority. What is in front of us tonight is a decision for a class-two dealer's license. General Law Chapter one forty, section fifty-nine requires this board to look at three areas. That the license is, the licensee is a proper person, that the business is the principal business and that the business is suitable. We all think of different things when we say suitable, but this board does not have that authority. What is in our purview is to place conditions and restrictions. We can include the number of cars in total, hours of operation, what cars are visible and anything reasonably related to the elimination for reduction of adverse impacts. With that being said, I'm gonna just address some of the issues. I think we as taxpayers, citizens, boards, committees and commissions need to revisit our zoning. We need, the federal government is not gonna help us here and DEP is not gonna help us here. We've already been done that way. It's up to us to make the changes. It's up to us to look at our zoning bylaws. It's up to us to vote for the proper way to zone this town. Our land, protected land is limited in this town. And I think that if we wanna keep the small nature of this town, it's up to us to make the changes. Because once it gets to this board, we don't have the authority. The planning board, the zoning enforcement, zoning bylaws, those are the people that have the authority. Our authority, and I'm sorry that we feel like we're the end all be all, it's not up to us. We only have a certain small purview to work under, a certain small authority to work under. And that's why we're here tonight. This should have and could have been prevented had we have looked at this area prior. Because when we look at zoning, we should always think in the back of our heads, what is the worst case scenario? And unfortunately, in my eyes, this is the worst case scenario. With that being said, like I said before, our purview is small and our authority is very small. I'm just gonna throw this up to the board. I think we should limit the number of cars. I think we should limit the number, the hours of operation. And I think that we can look at things that are reasonably related to the elimination for reduction of the adverse impacts, both from the water side and from the town side. And I'll just bring it up to the board.
So what will you have in mind for cars?
I think to start off with, well, I'll go because that's probably gonna be the, the one that's gonna draw the most attention. I think the, I just have a question for Co-Part. Can you tell me how long it takes to unload a fully, a fully, I don't know, truck of cars?
Usually, usually when the automobiles come in, the riders' carrier would be a four-car carrier and that is usually roughly fifteen minutes to unload that.
Okay, thank you. So I would contend that the hours of operation be between the hours of seven AM with fully loaded vehicles by seven PM. I also recommend that there be no vehicles delivered to the property between the hours after seven PM till seven AM in the morning. I further recommend or ask the board to consider a total number of five thousand cars to start off with. I also think that there should be considerations given to the people that live across the river and to the people in this town that use the waterways that maybe not a full burn, but I think there should be consideration to something to, to not have that visible from the waterways.
We do have a bylaw on the books, the riding standard. And if that's the case, I should, I get that by law.
So we can make this contingent upon the zoning enforcement agent looking over that bylaw and if he has a problem with that, bringing it back to the board. So that would be contingent on a favorable decision from the zoning enforcement agency. Trevor?
I, I'm just, I'm not clear with what, what was being proposed.
I'm saying, I'm asking the board to consider allowing the permit for the class-two dealer's license with the following conditions.
It's, it's the last condition, I'm sorry.
Okay, oh. So the one that George just talked about?
Right.
So George, this gentleman brought up something from the zoning enforcement agency in the bylaw?
Correct.
I just wanna make sure that, or George just wants to make sure that that is being adhered to. And I mean, there's a question of whether he looked at it or not. I have confidence that he did look at it, I mean, he signed, but you know, he might have missed it, I don't know. So that's what George is looking at right now.
So, so if I understand correctly, the operations would have to be consistent with the requirements of the zoning bylaw?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is the zoning enforcement agent, we're gonna ask him to just review his determination and ensure that that part of it, that section of the bylaw has been adhered to, that's all. Not, we're not gonna open this all up again.
Okay.
Just that one part?
Thank you for that.
Okay.
What about hours of operation on Saturdays and on the weekends? Is that, when you say from seven AM to seven PM, is that Monday through?
That's Monday through Friday right now. I'm, I'm, I'm just one person, I'm opening that to the board, okay?
Are we keeping the stored vehicles two hundred feet from?
That's, that's already what is proposed, as I said.
My only issue with the hours of operation is that we have a stop and shop right there. It's twenty-four hours and has over six hundred trucks a day. And then we also have Amazon, you know, right there as well. I mean, it seems to me that we'd be treating Co-Part's different agents out of, you know. I mean, I, I, I see, I, I think that that was their position, that's what I would say. So that's one thing I, I think.
I think I read somewhere in the proposal that it was seven AM to seven PM, but they were also asking about overnight deliveries. And I think that that's, overnight deliveries is, is really happening. Although there was some mention to not that many overnight deliveries and seldom happening.
May I respond?
Yes.
So as part of the site plan review approval, there were no vehicle drop-offs that occur between midnight and six AM. So there was already that prescription that there can be no overnight vehicle deliveries. And as Lisa Doherty stated last time, that's, that's few and far between. In terms of hours of operation, what we had, or what parameters of the site plan, again, review decision where it was six AM to seven PM, there was a caveat in there. In the event of a natural disaster, if Co-Part needed to run beyond those, you know, on a very off chance, that we would communicate with the town and let them know that there is some kind of major weather event is typically what constitutes them having to work beyond their typical business hours.
Thank you.
So.
So it's not that different, my hours of operation are not totally different.
They're not, they're not.
They're different by one hour.
They're not very different. If, if the board is seeking to impose restrictions on hours of operation, we would ask for that same flexibility in the event of an emergency situation. Again, that's not something that occurs all that often, but you know, they, they are considered first responders in an emergency situation because they do help clear roadways.
I think I would be, myself would be open to that.
And then we can, is it Monday through Friday or is it seven days a week operation?
So what I need to hold is that typically it is, it is a Monday through Friday operation. They typically do not work on weekends. I'll give you a couple of exceptions. Again, that emergency situation that I was just referencing. And then on occasion, if somebody doing a drop-off or a pickup on a Friday, just for whatever reason can't get there, there may be a limited time on a Saturday where somebody will come in either to drop off or pick up. But they typically do not work seven days a week, correct, Tim? Again, Tim's the general manager for an operation here in Massachusetts, so he, he's been saying, no, that, we're typically Monday through Friday, I just can never say, we never have to accommodate somebody on a Saturday or again, in an emergency situation.
And my concern would be having a limited, I think it's good, but unintended, unintended consequence could be trucks, you know, on Main Street or everywhere waiting to get in there, you know, if they can't get in or something of that nature.
Right, but there are the.
Yeah, that's fine, that makes sense enough.
All right, thanks. And I think that I'm open to natural emergencies and things like that as long as they give us the heads up that that's gonna happen.
Absolutely.
And then that way, once we, you know, when we feel calls from people saying why, we have an answer.
Yep.
George, you are in with that? Anything else?
And I wanna say one thing too, I, I do echo this, or I live in the Bay Cities. I believe that there, this was something else that was wrong there, but I also do believe this is, you know, this is private property and it's valued, it's, it's, you know, they did everything right. So you know, it's, it's not our decision whether we'd like this company specifically or not, you know.
Madam Chair, have you, you heard?
Again? Sure, go ahead.
I'll be very brief. I know, I understand the board hasn't voted or made a decision yet, but your recommendation was just to cap the license at, at five thousand cars. I, I think that's gonna be problematic for what Co-Part envisions for this site. Their typical operations for this site, I think was a vision that's somewhere between twelve and fourteen thousand cars. The extra eight or six thousand cars would really be for overflow in the event of an emergency situation is what they've always envisioned for. Five thousand would, would really limit them. I mean, it, it'd be cutting it really in half or maybe a little bit more than in half. If that's the condition that's, that's imposed by the board. I just ask you to keep that, keep that in mind.
Thanks.
So can we assume that that would be appealed? Five thousand is what you want?
I, I, there, there is a possibility. Again, I never like to stand before a board and say, if you don't give me this, I'm gonna.
I know, I'm just trying to be practical there.
That's a serious discussion that they would have. I would not be surprised if that's a determination that they make. Again, because of their, their investment into this property, how much they paid for it, how much they're making capital improvements and, and really the need for what they see for the area. So I, I do, I do envision that being problematic and, and something that they seriously consider taking that appeal.
Thank you.
I'll give you my thought process on the five thousand cars. First of all, we don't know how this is gonna operate, right? So I think that it'll give us time to digest and see how this operation really totally works. The second thing is, is I reviewed all the class-two motor vehicle licenses that we've given out and we have put number of cars as restrictions and we have put hours of recommendation, hours of operation restrictions as well. So I mean, I'm not, I'm not just pulling something out of the air. It is one of the areas that we do have jurisdiction over, that's all.
I, I understand that. I'm certainly not suggesting that you're just pulling that out of the air. I understand the board does have some discretion in that regard. I, I'm just asking for the board to reconsider or at least you to reconsider that and for the other board members to take that into consideration.
Thank you. Tim, when do they come back for, if the license were to be given tonight, can you tell me when they come back again?
They would usually come back in the month of December, somewhere in thereabouts.
Can you tell me when they're gonna be open, completely open?
I think best case scenario, Brandon might give the answers a lot better. I think best case scenario, they were shooting for maybe a December opening. best-case scenario, they were shooting for maybe a December opening, um, is that-
Yeah, I, I obviously can't talk about operations, but I know from the construction timeline, they're aiming for construction to be complete, or substantially complete December.
Okay, thanks.
So I, I don't know if they'd be quite open, uh, by that point.
Um, I'll entertain a motion from the board to, um, approve this, um, class-two dealer's license with the following conditions. That the number of cars be capped at five thousand, and consideration be given after a six-month window of total operation. That the hours of operation be from seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday. Um, emergency situations with the twenty, with, you know, not twenty-four hours notice, 'cause you're not gonna know that, but with as much notice as possible given to the town administrator or the board of selectmen. Also, um, with reasonable thought effort to, um, protect, because again, um, anything reasonably related in reduction of adverse, adverse impacts, and I think there is an adverse impact to the waterway, no matter how you look at it, there has to be something done to try and eliminate that eyesore from the river that people so enjoy.
Madam Kim, you just mind, do we keep that?
Oh, and one more.
Sorry.
Sorry, one more, and, um, this is contingent upon, um, the zoning enforcement officer, once again, looking at that specific, only that specific area of the bylaw that has been brought up by this gentleman, and given us a written determination that, that this has been taken care of, and that Copart has adhered to that part of it.
Motion granted.
Now, should I just, I was waiting, but I'm out, as quick as, as soon. Did I just get this again?
I thought I was speaking rather slowly.
I write slow.
I didn't get it either, so.
Okay. Let me go through it again?
If you don't mind.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to grant the class-two dealer, dealer's license with the following conditions. A total number of five thousand cars, with consideration given after six months of total full operation. To increase the amount of cars. Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven PM, emergency situations with notification to the town administrator and/or the board of selectmen's office. Consideration given, strongly recommended, that that area that is visible from the waterway be not open, and not, not have to see the cars, so I don't know how, how you wanna write that, but we need to reduce the adverse impact from the water as well, whether you plant trees there, whether you put high grass there, whether, whatever you have to do to cut that off, 'cause I can't even see why you would ever want to be noticed from the water, I think you would wanna hide yourself as much as possible. And, I think, um, that's it?
And, and the last one, containment on the zoning-
And the zoning bylaw.
Okay, I got that.
So, motion granted?
Do you have a second? No? Okay, I'll second that. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we have two ayes and then another dissent. Again, I think that, that you know that's a business decision on Copart, you made that decision, um, but it falls back on us as well, and that we need to get our heads together and look at zoning in all of our land, and we need to reconsider some of this area, because if we wanna keep our town small and charming, and, it comes back to us, again, federal government and DEP have let us down many times, and, um, it's up to us now. Alright, I will-
Is that before you, before you turn?
Yep.
Could I just ask Mr. Baptiste for the exact, uh, bylaw?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you members of the board.
Thank you.
Section eleven point one eight is zoning districts. Section eleven point one eight B states that all new construction shall conform to the provision of this bylaw. Section eleven one eight E one says enclosed by a solid wall fence or planting of such nature and height as to conceal such operational materials from view from any public way or area or neighborhood premises.
So it's eleven point one eight, eleven point one eight B, and eleven point one eight E one?
Correct. Thank you very much. Um, could I email you with something to give to the zoning enforcement officer with our point of view on this?
You can, you can email the town administrator, and he'll just carry it up for you.
I'll do that tonight.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, um, you're a gentleman.
Thank you. Um, I just have a couple of things from the board to, um, consider putting off in the next agenda. One of those is, um, like I heard up at the beginning of the meeting, there were some various discussions and internal meetings that we were not, uh, that we were not asked to go to, and I think that, um, we should form a committee of opinion, because that any business that wants to come into town, any business, should be looked over with, with some of those players of the people. Um, because this has hit us kinda over the head, and I think that, um, when we do our flashes, or whatever we do, we need to make a list of, like, maybe those potential businesses coming into town, not-
Like solar, like-
Yeah, just so, you know, there's a public hearing on X, Y, Z, and I know we do that, I just feel like, I don't know how we get the word out better, because it doesn't, it, you know, unfortunately, we're only in charge of this license, we're not in charge of any of that other stuff. That's, right, and that's- I agree, and I think, I, I think that we all made it very clear tonight that we need to start looking at that seriously. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion granted.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.